Good evening to one and all. This is the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council for Monday, November 19. It is after 7:30. I think Mr. Ansel's clock was wrong when he said he gave me three minutes before. But I won't hold to that. The next meeting will be Monday, November, what is it?
Third.
Third, yes.
December.
December 3rd, yes. And I know you're planning to have a finance committee meeting that night.
At six.
Six o'clock.
Yes.
So you plan to put everyone through their paces, and I think the hospital folks are going to be here as well.
Correct, thank you.
So just for those here, put that on your agenda. Do you have that figured out there yet?
No, but I got my other one working.
Okay. So this is the part where I ask you to call the board.
Oh, I can do that. Mr. Ansel.
Here.
Mr. Bestanzic.
Here.
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
And the agenda will remain as presented, and we do have a quorum. At this time, I would ask you to stand and join the city council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, one and all. There's a little part under, after the approval of the minutes, which I will entertain a motion for the approval of minutes for November 5, 2018.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Warden to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And then as part of this, since it's part of the housekeeping for council, is my term ended on CRA, Housing Council, but if anyone is, I would gladly serve again and am asking to. If anyone is opposed, let me know, but if not, I'd entertain a motion to have.
I motion to have you retain your position on the Coalition Board.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ansel, second by Mr. Myers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, and see me afterward. Just kidding. Communications from there. Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke and council members. I know we've got a long meeting ahead of us, so I'll keep my comments short. The first thing I'd like to mention is one of the pieces of legislation in front of you tonight about funding for the Wayne Economic Development Council, our partner in economic development services here in the city. Tom Bukas spoke to you at the meeting prior to this, the finance committee meeting. They are truly a very important partner for us, as well as the Chamber of Commerce is. We all have our roles and duties to do. The Wayne Economic Development brings a piece to the table that we need, and that is the reaching out the finder piece of the whole finder, minder, grinder scenario for us. They are direct contact with Jobs Ohio, the state agency that helps with economic development and coordinates all of the possible business expansions that are looking for new homes with our community. They've performed extremely well as an organization. They are a true partner with us, and for what we are funding them, we could not do it with another person on staff for the amount of money that we are utilizing to help keep the Wayne Economic Development Council healthy and moving forward. So I do request that you consider increasing the funds that we pay them on an annual basis from $51,000 to $58,000. It's a $7,000 increase. Mr. Ansel pointed out in the committee meeting that it was about a 2% per year increase on that, and that is approximately right on the whole thing. So that's one piece that I would like to point out to you. The others, one of the most important pieces as a council that you deal with, and that's the budget for our coming year. It is ordinance 2018-023. It's our operating budget for our general fund and other enterprise funds of our city. First, I want to say thank you to Andre Dordia and our finance team in the city for putting all the numbers in the right boxes and making the whole thing work together to be able to present to you. I'd like to thank Joel and our division managers because they really did the number crunching to create the booklet that you have in front of you tonight and how to keep our city running forward. I'd like to thank Bill Sharon and Scott Boyes and the hospital board for the work that they and we are about to do. The hospital board will be meeting here on the 28th of November to approve the budget to bring forward at the next council meeting to be a part of the booklet on that. So this is a very important budget. In actuality, it's a very good budget to be able to present to you. Our 2019 general fund revenues, we approximate 25.8 million in revenues coming in. 2019 general fund expenditures of 22.8 million, so a balance remaining of that is $3 million. So we are operating in the black. Now, after you take that number, we have 2019 planned transfers to the capital fund. We are forecasting $4 million of that. So that 4 million takes out 3 million of our operating balance, plus about $1 million in our savings, all right? That's what we accumulate savings for to work on projects, and these are our capital fund projects. So a capital fund of $4 million transfer is what we are approximating going into 2019. Some big-ticket capital items are a fire truck for $840,000, three police cars valued at $150,000 total, and paving of $1.09 million. And that's not the whole paving schedule. That's only the general fund dollars that are being spent on the paving schedule. We have other permissive tax funding and other fundings that are in your booklet that really will show the final number of the paving projects for next year. New positions for 2019. Summary, a fire division. We are anticipating one new position of a firefighter and community risk reduction inspector. It will help us to work with our community to make sure everyone is following the codes appropriately so that we can keep our fire risk down in our community. So that's one position. Police division. We are looking at funding a second school resource officer. Now, that truly started here in September of this year, but we are just running out of operating funds in our police budget for the remainder of this year, and we told you that we'd be budgeting for that position in 2019, and we do. Now, that position is a split cost with the school system, so it's not a whole cost on the city. The other is a wastewater plant lab technician, one position. So for still, we're still running our city with less than 200 employees total for a population of over 27,000 people. So we believe it is still a very respectable budget to present to you, and it gives you good fodder to ask questions and make choices and decisions and set the budget for 2019. So we're here to help in that endeavor, and I know Mr. Ansel has other committee meetings planned to help get, drill down into it. I know tonight's the first you're seeing that booklet, so it will be difficult for you to ask too many questions on it. That's why I wanted to give you sort of a highlight summary. We will mail a copy of the hospital's 29 budget once it's approved by the Worcester Community Hospital Board of Governors on November 28th. So you do not need to print that information because it's going to be a fairly sizable document. Lastly, the bed tax funds. Your presentations tonight, and Mr. Ansel, I think some are raised it well, we will work and see if we can take cultural aspects of our community into consideration for equality of life, peace for Worcester. So we look forward to those conversations. With that, I know you have an extremely busy meeting. We are here to help and assist in any way we can, so any questions, please let us know. Thank you.
Okay, no petitions, but we have several people that have signed up. Mahid Matlouf, I might have mispronounced that. Do you want to speak now or at the time we have the public hearing?
It's for the hearing, actually. I'm just talking.
Right. Well, I just want to give you an opportunity. You maybe have two bites at the apple. All right. So Greg Garris has signed up. Mr. Garris, please state your name and address, please.
My name is Mr. Garris, and I live at 347 North Grand Street. I'm speaking on the resolution tonight opposing 2018-069 because I'm opposed to this because as an agent or a vendor, I'm outsourced vendors to the city of Worcester. What we've seen recently in the paper was Main Street, Main Street speaking in such hate, in such loathing of our few homeless in town. I think for that alone, as an agent of the city, Main Street should not be a recipient of the bed tax anymore. I'm also opposed to this because the bed tax is for everybody, everybody in town, not just for Main Street. When was the last time this joint application group had an open advertised bid? 30 years of monopolizing for Main Street is a pretty good deal. I think that should be changed. And when was the last time Main Street was ever financially audited? That's why I'm opposed to this. I'm also opposed to this because while this vitriol and hate was spewed in the newspaper, Main Street last November took the liberty of shutting the library down, a public asset to hold a personal Main Street little party. I think for that reason, that should not be given the money to hurt again, ever again. I'm also opposed to the money being given to the Chamber because the Chamber is a private group of business people, very well, to do if they can't make ends meet, if they can't come and they're very capable of fending for themselves, unlike the homeless in our town. I think the Chamber also should not receive any of this money because I believe it's receiving federal grant monies. I believe they apply for federal funding at times, and without a lull, this hateful speech of Main Street, Chamber should not be condemning that speech. You work partners hand in hand with Main Street, the Chamber. I'm hoping that you're going to speak out against that hate speech. Besides, it's a felony, it's a federal crime, it's a hate crime, Main Street. Think about that. Next time you speak like that. I'm also against and opposed to Chamber for receiving this bed tax money because, as I'm being told, it's been receiving commission monies for allowing an insurance vendor to sell insurance to city and county employees. If that's true, that sort of smacks like coercion, maybe a little bribery, but I would like to ask you, Mr. Scavelli, the name of the insurance broker? Who insures the city employees?
There's not question and answer.
All right, fine, but so it's out there. In any case, I think it's fair to say that I'm opposed to the bed tax being given to wealthy individuals, to another who's viewing hate, and I think that this town can do much better. I spoke of this this evening, the arts people, that we can do better. We need to break this monopoly up with Main Street. That was the first item. I signed up for two items. And the second item, I'm opposed to the ordinance 2018-021 allowing the council to purchase health care insurance benefits through the city of Worcester because once again, if it's true that the insurance is being given to city and county employees from this insurance broker only because the Chamber's giving a commission, I think that needs to be investigated. Thank you.
And we'll have one other person speak, but Ms. Hirschberger asked that, and we recognize now that lady will speak during the presentation by Ms. Hirschberger. So that concludes our communications from the public. Turns to committee reports. Why don't we, do you want to give a brief synopsis of the?
Yes, of course. We had, we had a presentation from the WEDC regarding our contribution, our four-year campaign contribution regarding their effectiveness within our community and the results that they've driven and to get a vision of their game plan and future focus points for the upcoming four-year campaign term. It was very informative, very thorough, and we look forward to that ongoing positive relationship, as Mayor Brenneman noted. We also had an information overview provided by the Ohio Light Opera in the Wayne Center of the Arts, showing their positive impact and contribution on our community and the results that they've delivered year after year for their positive cultural influence as well as economic drivers, bringing outside people into our community to enjoy performances and to engage in cultural and fine arts and impact analysis on their contribution for future consideration. They were not part of this year's application process, so that's for future discussion and debate from council and from the administration. So again, very informative, two well-presented programs, and we appreciate the time and effort that they devoted to putting together their presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Ansel. That brings us to a public hearing on a zoning map amendment, and I think you're handling it there, Mr. Sanders, since you're Chair of Laws and Ordinance.
I am, Mr. President. I will admit, I've either, either I missed the information being sent to me or it wasn't sent to me, but regardless, I see Mr. Dutton is in the audience, so we'll call this public hearing to order. And if I could be so unfair, if I could be unfair to ask Mr. Dutton to stand up and speak a little bit about this, I would appreciate it.
Sure. We have an application for rezoning located at the northeast corner of Burbank Road and West Central District. Current zoning there is AEG Agriculture, and will be, the quote, rezoning to C3 general commercial. A little bit of history on the property. It was annexed into the city in 2009. It was annexed and did not receive a zoning classification, so by default, it was zone R1, suburban, single-family residential. Shortly thereafter, the property owner wanted to rezone the property to AEG Agriculture, in order to fit with what the current use was, and at the time, agriculture was actually not committed in R1 district, and it does not the case anymore. At that time, the zonings were agriculture and single-family residential, apparent that it was always intended to develop at a high intensity, the commercial, heavy residential. The AEG district, agriculture, this is actually the only property in the city, zone agriculture, and it allows basically just agriculture, and it's pretty limited on anything else. The C3 district is general commercial, so it allows pretty much most common commercial leases, retail, restaurants, service establishments, hotels, things of that nature, most of the things you see around at the north end of Burbank Road, so it would be mostly an extension of the commercial on Burbank Road. Our commerce plan was put in 2014. At that time, we didn't see a lot of development up on the north end. We had the recession, and we were looking at kind of focus areas outside of that. Since that time, we've seen a lot of interest in developments on the north end, shops at Burbank, with the PJ Maxx, Odd Guys, development there, all of these, industrial construction, Meyer looking at Monta Road, even though that wasn't approved, kind of a lot of interest in the north end, and I think that's justified this zoning to another C3 area, even though it's a rather large area of land, 53.4 acres. The planning commission held a public hearing on October 24th. They voted unanimously to recommend approval of the application. Staff's recommendation is also for, that's a short overview of the application, and any questions after.
I know I have, I know, I have no questions, so I appreciate your, appreciate the overview on this.
Just a quick one. Under Charter under permitted uses, says dwellings, multifamily, and traditional housing, conditional. Is that conditional use? What would be the conditions on that? If somebody, if they so desired some housing in that area?
So a permitted use, or permitted with standards, is permitted by right or meets that standard, so it can be administratively approved, but use anyway, the site plan would likely have to go through the review process. Anywhere with a conditional use, that requires approval of the use itself by private commission and a public hearing. So that multifamily residential require that, service stations require that, so anywhere that the seat of the chair has that actual level of review.
So if somebody wanted to do residential, then they had to go to the planning commission before that could be approved?
You would most likely need site plan review anyway from the planning commission, but also the use on its face would need to be approved by the commission with the public hearing.
Do you, there's not an oversupply of land right now for a commercial, but with the other annexation we just went through, the 162 acres, there's some residential in there, and then there's some C3 commercial in there as well. Do you foresee an overabundance maybe of, that doesn't include big box stores, am I correct? C3?
C3 would, that's our highest.
C3 would.
That's our highest intensity commercial.
Yeah, that would include big box?
Yeah. The Richard property is, is zones C2, C3, and multifamily zoning. I think there's kind of a difference between these two locations and kind of the applications. The Richard rezoning was, for lack of a better word, kind of speculative. They didn't have anyone ready to go in there. In this case, I think the applicant is actively looking to develop property and to build a business area, also on 83 Burbank Road, to make it a little more attractive for this type of.
You don't see a problem with, say, a big box store or high-intensity commercial next, fairly near, like you'd say Deer Creek Development, the housing development there? There's been a real big step down. Usually prefer like to have a step down between a large commercial area to residential. It usually isn't, do you not? Or you think that's far enough away not to be a problem?
Ideally, yes. I mean, if you look at the back of the movie theater and the Wild Wings, that's residential right next to that. And in this case, you've got the roundabout, and if you look at the net, the roundabout is pretty, pretty large there. At least a couple, almost a couple hundred feet between the property and the actual residential properties. So it's kind of catty quarter, that's a very wide distance there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for this zoning map amendment?
Good evening, council member, members of council, mayor. My name is Majid Makhlouk, I'm a partner with Walter McBurns, Officer Greenberger, and I represent the property owner in this application. I have with me Mr. Stuart McCoy. I think Director Button did an excellent job, and I actually was very impressed with the level of material that was submitted before. You would be happy to answer any question. If I were to do a more in-depth presentation, I'd probably repeat what Mr. Dutton said, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
But you do have, you do not have any imminent plans?
It's not, the, it's not a question of imminent plans. For sure, this is not expected of rezoning, the property is being actively sought for development. The issue that you wanted to, is confidentiality issues with potential end users. Because they will not commit until you have the zoning in place, and if you start putting names on it, it becomes an issue. So, but, but I can absolutely assure you that this is not just a rezoning for the sake of rezoning, we're hoping to speed it on.
To follow that up, are you at liberty to disclose at what level there are site plans for this piece? Is it half full? Is it, is there interest in 80%? Are you at liberty to elaborate at all?
It's premature yet. I've seen multiple site plans, but they're all conceptual at this point, and I do quite a bit of development work, and I always caution people, you see a site. The biggest concern sometimes when you show site plans, people get attached to it and think that it's the reality when it's just an architect's drawing on paper at this point. But it's, there, it really varies in terms of what the use is. But think of, you're at an arterial section, you're on a state route, the location has a regional draw, it's not a immediate pedestrian, you know, Doug, it is in many ways the ideal location for that kind of zoning. I think it was always anticipated to be like that. So, you know, in this economy, you're going to attract a lot of interest, the problems, you know, until the zoning is in place, it's very difficult for.
As our planning and zoning manager mentioned, I can remember there being discussions about further growth on the north end, and it was just speculation years ago that it probably would not extend beyond Smithville Western Road. So I guess the only concern that I do have is with buffering and how it's going to mesh with the rest of the surrounding area. I will say that I have seen site plans attempt to, and sometimes make up some differences because of some creative things at our disposal these days, you know, mounding, tree lines, those types of things. I would just say, with, without seeing a site plan, I would just encourage that there's, that developers would utilize all the resources at their disposal to be cognizant and aware and considerate of the surrounding area.
Message absolutely received and understood, and two points I would say to that is, is one, you know, when you reapprove, when you approve the zoning, this is just approving the zoning, once development happens, there will be a development plan. The development plan will address all those issues. The development plan will require a traffic impact study to be done for traffic issues. All of those issues would be addressed as part of the development plan. We have a, as opposed to conceptual plan and how this may look, where you actually have the development place, you come in there with the development plan, landscaping, screening, now, all those issues get addressed as part of the development plan, and I, you know, right now, I'm private practice, and I do, I used to sit on the other side of the table. So I very much understand exactly what you're saying, and those are issues that I, we're very cognizant of, and obviously, I'm sure the city will hold us to it even when the time comes.
Thank you.
I appreciate those remarks, Counsel. I was just going to remind my council colleagues that our job tonight is determine whether or not it makes sense to change the zoning. All these other matters are way down the road, and that's why we have Mr. Dutton and a planning commission to vet the projects.
If you have, if you have nothing else, words.
Thank you very much.
Or we can sit here and cross-examine.
You've got a big binder full of stuff.
The only thing I would say is that we obviously understand in no way on the first reading, and that's not the request, but if there's any way on the second reading, we'd very much appreciate that, so that we can start actually working actively on the next phase.
All right. Thank you for your remarks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience which is to speak for, for this rezoning? Mr. Garris?
Mr. Garris, once again, I'm for rezoning if it will include housing for low-income individuals, the homeless that we have in town. individuals, if the homes that we have in town, because we're not currently using our revenue housing money, we earmark federal money.
We want to know if you're for, again?
I'm for the rezoning if it's going to include housing, and if it does, for low-income people, then maybe we can use our revenue housing for them in those houses. And because, spoken of earlier, there's a lot of bed tax money, maybe we could make a few beds, because that bed tax money in this rezoning area.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak for it? Is there anyone to speak against it? I see none, so it's that. We will say that this public hearing is concluded. Thank you.
All right, the public hearing on zoning a map amendment for the parcel north of Smithville Western has been had. Turning right to unfinished business, this will be ordinance number twenty-eighteen day zero nineteen. It'll be presented by Mr. Sanders. If you would, please, Mr. Paulo, read the title.
Ordinance number twenty-eighteen oh one nine, an ordinance amending chapter one sixty-two, management benefits of the codified ordinances of the city of Worcester, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had a couple, we've now had this twice before us. Basically, what we're looking to do is take additional benefits that were part of the collective bargaining agreements, and apply these to, to the management personnel within the city. And for myself, I only, one of the questions I have for the administration is, is this, in your mind, imperative in order to continue to be able to attract the quality, the caliber of employee that we would like to have?
Mr. Sanders, I, I would say, yes, it is, and it's also necessary to, to create within our own ranks, people who want to continue climbing the ladder and have a, a place to go. If, if we don't keep management above the, the, the wage earners, then, then you create a, a top where you won't have people try to grow into a management position, because their, their benefits are, are better than what we have in the management realm. So, yes, I believe that we need to do that. Joel, if you want to comment on that too, you're welcome.
The only clarification I wanted to make is the, the changes here are simply eliminating sunset language, so those benefits were already in the management benefit ordinance. A couple of contracts ago, when we were negotiating with WA Police and Fire, we were attempting to negotiate some of that out, management put in at that time, a sunset provision. At that time, over the last couple of contract periods, we were unable to negotiate those, those changes with, with the unions, the last being fired when we actually went to arbitration. So at this point, all we were asking is, now that those are basically set in stone for the rest of the employees of the city, just to eliminate those sunset provisions, which maintains those benefits in, in the management.
And later the fact, this is third reading, I would motion to, to adopt ordinance two thousand eighteen dash zero one nine.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Mr. Anderson?
Yes, for clarification, we received this spreadsheet summary of positions that was requested by President Biden, Di. How many management employees does this encompass in terms of the, bringing them up to equivalent to hourly and non-managerial functions? I think I count eleven? Yes.
So there's thirty, there's thirty-eight, or thirty-nine total management, supervisory?
I didn't count supervisors, Joel. On that spreadsheet, you did the columns. You have management and SCA positions impacted by management ordinances the far left, so that's the number?
Total, total, it was one sixty-two applied.
Right here.
All of them, yes.
Okay.
Generally, in, in highly compensated individuals, we're looking at seventy-five thousand to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Oftentimes, they're 401Ks, and things are capped at a higher, at a percentage based on the general contribution. I don't know why we would give this extra six thousand dollars to our highly compensated managers when they're already, you know, they're getting above that level. Could we limit this to people at a lower pay scale, or does that interfere with your promotion situation as well?
There's, there's many of those supervisory positions that we have difficulty getting people to take that jump up, to increase responsibility, lack of comp time, lack of overtime, to move up into that position. And if you'd like to promote them, then sometimes that's very difficult because of.
Do you have openings now that you're trying to fill?
Not at the present time, but we have.
And not in the budget for twenty nineteen that was outlined, right?
Multiple over, over the year, and we never know when that might change, somebody, you know, wants to take a job, or else we would be looking to, to fill those positions.
Yes, my only other comment, just for clarification, for the residents of Worcester. What we're talking about here is sick leave payout, which is currently twenty-five percent of accumulated sick, sick leave, up to three hundred and sixty hours. I know for all of us on council, that's not something that we're routinely dealing with, and that was one of the things that we tried to negotiate out, because this legislation would then increase that to thirty-three percent of six hundred hours. So that's a lot of accumulated sick leave delta, but understanding that was the arbitrator's recommendation for us to adhere to that. But again, we talked about the healthcare cost, and this is a rich benefit for someone to accumulate six hundred hours of accumulated sick leave, and have a thirty-three percent payout after they retire after twenty-seven years. And then also the stipend, that's insignificant, we understand where that was from, that was just a pre-retirement incentive, and that has, you know, to do with longevity. So two real issues here, but again, it's just something that we deal with in public administration, but it's a pretty nice program when we look at the salary and benefits of all city employees, so we should be proud of that. You shouldn't have difficult time getting good competent people, but understanding the promotability incentive, you get locked in at certain wage scales, but these are highly competitive wages and benefits and total compensation package, and we're very fortunate because we have a highly skilled and highly competent work staff within the city of Worcester. So that's what we're dealing with this evening, I just wanted to bring some clarity of that, because there's several pages of, you know, legalistic summaries here, but the condensed Cliff Notes version is those two issues, and again, that's what the arbitrator had recommended, and it's a very nice benefit, and it's a nice reward for nearly thirty years of service to your community.
Just a couple of points. The dollar figure, you know, was negotiated, but the higher revised code actually has a, requires us, any municipal government, to pay out a certain amount of accumulated sick leave, so we have to pay out a certain amount of that, so we have, that, that's the floor, we can negotiate more than that.
And that was the three sixty?
Correct.
Yes.
Some of the other things that we do compete with when we're trying to hire somebody from the private sector is, you know, we don't have the 401Ks, we don't have bonuses, you know, in those.
But you have O-Purse pension, yes, you have comparable incentives, so don't confuse the issue.
Yeah.
Let me ask one question, if I may. I've seen in the private sector, vacation slash sick leave moved to just PTO or paid time off, and I, I didn't know if we see that coming to public service anytime soon, or what, what we see on the horizon as far as that.
We actually looked into that in great detail a couple of contracts ago, and we ran into some legal issues because of the way the higher revised code was written, so we did try to, we actually started down that road a while back, and it was going to become very difficult for us to do this in the, in the public sector.
To talk to our state representatives about that, I suppose, okay. Thank you.
I have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, any further discussion? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Sanders?
No.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number twenty-eighteen day zero nineteen passes. We'll be looking at resolution number twenty-eighteen day zero six six. This will be presented by Mr. Myers. Before I get to you, Mr. Myers, I will once again ask Mr. Paulo to please read the title.
Resolution number twenty-eighteen oh six six, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Worcester YMCA for professional administrative services related to the management and operation of the city of Worcester swimming facilities.
Mr. Myers, the floor is yours.
Thank you, I, we.
Thank you, we reviewed this briefly at the last meeting. We left it on first reading. It would be my intention, unless there's opposition from council, to, to move this to third and final and have it approved this evening. We had a really great year, last year, for the Worcester City YMCA pool partnership. I did note last meeting that Mr. Batic did not need to return, but since he's here, I will call on him in case he would like to add anything to the documents that have been given to us.
Thank you, Mr. Myers, I have nothing to add.
Very well. Thank you for coming. Again, we won't go through all this, there's a lot of things on the agenda. If anyone has any questions of the numbers, now you've had this for the last couple of weeks, it's a very great partnership. I did note, we are going to extend the season for an additional week to very popular demand. That helps us get a little bit further into the year, as far as in the summer season, it's still fairly warm after the dog swim at Freeland, or so. But the intention is to keep Christmas run open for an additional week. Other than that, I'd like to move to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Myers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel, would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Kevin?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
The rules are suspended, Mr. Myers.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Myers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms., Mr. Silvestri. Any further discussion? I didn't like, we haven't seen this contract before in terms, we've had a very amenable relationship with the Y in terms of the pools, but I'll give you one last chance. Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Kevin?
No.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-eighteen day zero six six, thank you Y, thank you, Mr. Batic and staff. Hopefully, we have a long, hot summer again. That's why they made air conditioning, right? And city pools. Ordinance number twenty-eighteen day zero two oh, be presented by Mr. Sanders. I look to you, Mr. Paulo, to read the title, please.
Ordinance number twenty-eighteen oh two oh, an ordinance amending chapter three seventy-five snowmobiles, off-highway motorcycles, and all-purpose vehicles of the codified ordinances of the city of Worcester, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know I had been contacted indirectly with some people that were interested in speaking towards this. I feel some degree that I'd like to let them, allow them that time to speak, so with that, I'm just going to, unless we have any questions that need to be answered this evening, I'm just going to officially say that this has had its second reading, and we'll, we'll revisit it in two weeks.
All right. Works for me, we'll consider ordinance number twenty-eighteen day zero two oh as having its second reading. That brings us to ordinance twenty-eighteen day zero two one, be presented again by Mr. Sanders. I will have Mr. Paulo, if you would, read the title.
Ordinance number twenty-eighteen oh two one, an ordinance allowing members of the Worcester City Council to purchase health insurance benefits through the city of Worcester.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, due for, for the sake of brevity this evening, since we do have a number of other items that really do need our attention, unless there is any major point that anyone on council would like to add towards this ordinance, I would just, at this point, say that it's had its second reading, and we'll revisit this in two weeks.
Seeing no one vehemently opposed to that, we'll consider ordinance number twenty-eighteen day zero two one as having its second reading. Ah, finally turn to new business. First reading of ordinance number twenty-eighteen day zero two two, you're a popular man, Mr. Sanders, I see this is yours as well, and it is slated for three readings. Again, would you please, Mr. Paulo, read the title?
Ordinance number twenty-eighteen oh two two, an ordinance amending part eleven, planning and zoning code of the codified ordinances of the city of Worcester, Ohio, to zone land fifty-three point four-two-eight acres to C three general commercial for property located on the northeast corner of Burbank Road and West Smithville Western Road, known as parcel sixty-seven dash oh two nine nine zero point oh oh oh.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we discussed in our public hearing, this is a request from the property owners to change the zoning from AG agricultural to C three general commercial. We had no one in the public meeting speak against it, we had the representative from the property owners to speak for it, as well as Mr. Dutton clarified that we did this, this request as it went through, the planning commission was, was approved unanimously. I will open the floor for discussion from council members, and at this point, I'll say to the petitioner, I really see no issue with, with wanting to vote on this, but I would, just for the sake of fairness to, to any adjacent property owners and anyone else in the community, I, we will leave this on first reading this evening, we will, we will revisit this in two weeks, and at this point, we will call for a vote in two weeks. So with that, I, I will open the floor, or if there's any questions from any fellow council members. Trans.
I like it, and I like it a lot. It's the natural expansion corridor up eighty-three with the roundabout and infrastructure. That was visionary, and we are glad we got that accomplished, and it is really just the ideal location for commercial expansion within our community, and it doesn't, in my opinion, I live in Deer Creek, we're already on a commercial corridor with, you know, the commercial development just south of us, right across the street from us, you know, as well as the, the high activity from the church, so it kind of moves it out of the corridor a little bit on a great traffic flow pattern, logistically speaking, coming from both directions, so, both on eighty-three, as well as the future roundabout, it's going to be on Friendsville Road, Smithville Western corridor. By the way, the traffic back up there on Smithville Western and Friendsville was about a half a mile, the. a half a mile this, this afternoon at 5:30. So, that second roundabout is going to be vital for the better, better traffic flow within that area.
Mr. Kevin?
A quick point of reference. Where is the city limit in relation to this map?
Defer that question to Mr. Dutton.
The city limits are northwest, east side of the parcel. This is the northern.
The northern border.
The northern border of this parcel would be the city limit.
As well as the east and west sides.
Right.
So, it's basically a peninsula, it's a peninsula that sticks north of the, of Smithville Western.
And we had talked about not wanting to create those at one time, you know, creating islands, as Mr. Olber used to say. So, I mean, it would stand to reason that in time, the property to the, be the east would probably be moved into city limits as well. Just saying.
Well, yeah, that necessarily wouldn't be an island. We had, we had areas where all, all four sides were surrounded by the city, so.
Yeah, Mr. Kevin's point is well taken, but it's almost like Florida.
Yeah.
With that many acres.
Better than Florida, though.
Uh-huh, California.
There you go.
I believe people on McCoy Farm can currently count, unlike Florida.
So, I guess we'll consider having ordinance number 2018 day 022 having its first reading. Resolution number 2018 day 067 be presented by Mr. Myers. There are folks here from advocating the transportation services as well as, I think Ms. Hirschberger has a brief presentation. Before I get it to, to you, which is presently slated for three readings, I will turn my eyes to Ms. Apollo and ask really nice to read yet another piece of legislation.
Resolution number 2018 oh six seven, a resolution authorizing the director of administration to contract with Community Action of Wayne Medina Counties for the provision of transportation services for qualified participants.
Okay, Mr. Myers, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much, President Byten Dyke. I'm going to call, usually I get these things in advance, and then I scoop the, the folks who are here to present, and I didn't get this enough in advance to do that to you this time, Ashley. So, I'm going to introduce Ashley Hirschberger, who will review the, the success of this program, and Leslie Bouse. I see you're coming up as well.
With the Osmonds, I was bringing my whole room.
Very good.
I've got two years in the scoop by you, Scott.
I know. You didn't give me the information.
Thank you, council. I have this cooperator with me, we're looking to renew our contract with Community Action of Wayne Medina Counties, and I have with me tonight Leslie Bouse and Melissa Hears from Community Action, as well as Derek Swartshuber from Worcester Transit, and I'm really excited that here we have a citizen that uses the program here to give you a testament of how she's using the program, Beth Beatty. And I'll have them speak, they can really speak more on the, how great the program has become in the last few years. I'm here for the numbers. So, just to give you a summary, this subsidized pass program is for our low-income residents, seniors, disabled veterans, and active military. We provide door-to-door transportation. The participants pay $2 per pass, one way, and then the city subsidizes now $6 for transport. Worcester Transit, Transit Transportation, participants who are on the program ride the transit for free as long as they show their transportation pass. They have to go through an application process, and they can have to buy their ID for $1. So, there is a little buy-in for the program. At the end of October, we have so far provided over 34,000 transports, and by the end of this year, we should be back to our 2009 numbers. We currently have 1,026 participants on the program. At the end of last year, we ended with 534. Since increasing our rates past our low-income residents, we now serve 94 elderly, 115 disabled, 34 elderly and disabled residents, and the rest are made up for veterans, active military, assistance individuals, and income-qualified residents. Last year, our work passes were used to get to 29 work and education sites, and this year, that has increased to 52 sites. So, we're, you can see these numbers doubling from last year. And Worcester Transit has added a paratransit vehicle, which serves wheelchair users and people that are walkers. And the program pass usage, and I checked this percentage that I provided you multiple times, it's increased 1,788 percent by the end of the year.
Too bad, too bad it's not working. Too bad it's not working. Yeah.
Last year, the capacity on the transit was at around 30 percent, and now it's consistently at 85 percent capacity, which leads me to pass along to Eric, pass this along to Eric, who can speak on a second route. We've been discussing, thinking of adding, and then I'm going to pass it on to Beth, who would like to speak about the program, and then I'll have Leslie wrap it up. I'm just the loud person.
Okay, I'm Eric Swartshuber of Worcester Transit, and I appreciate your time. First of all, I want to say that thanks for your current and the future support in our transportation efforts. I think you can see from the numbers that are shown in Ashley's presentation that there's been a lot of following, and you see a lot of feedback from the public saying that now we're finally deepened up into the process, that a lot of people are using this for meat-based things, appointment, and medical appointments, and things of that nature. There's several things that led to that. Part of that is taking the route full-time, which when we started, it wasn't necessarily full-time, it was a split shift. So, those numbers are definitely accurate, but there's also more that goes into it. So, those are some things that really led to that. We're very happy with the ridership, but also we feel like there are some areas where we could provide more of a service to more residential areas. I don't think we need more service retail, but to residential areas, and that's where we're really trying to focus on the potential of a second route, a second loop that would intersect the current loop. So, I think that there is good value there.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Beth Ian Beatty. I reside at 4,400 Melrose Drive, which is in the park. Be patient with me, I'm legally blind, so I have to make notes and look very closely, and I'm very nervous. I purchased my home in Melrose because of the proximity to Grace Church, which I attend faithfully, and Planet Fitness, which I use often. I was disappointed to find out after purchasing my home that Melrose would not allow a stop there with, for Worcester Transit. I'm going to quote the park manager's reason as being liability, number one, and number two, too many undesirables that could congregate around our mailboxes up front. The taxi pass system has been so vital to me because I live alone, I've been legally blind for about four years, so my driving's taken away, probably long after it should have been, but realistically, it's very hard. It's, it's, I guess what I want to say is, your independence becomes so vital at, at such a young age, when I was so active. I like to be active in my church, I like to be active in my community, so this taxi pass system has saved me. It needs a little bit of tweaking, but I don't know where I'd be without it. I don't have, my parents are deceased, I really am dependent on everybody for almost everything. The taxi pass system allows me to maintain my household and just stay as active as I possibly can. So, it's, it's, I'm, I'm looking forward to watching it grow, maybe more stops, so I can even, you know, reach out even more. This committee's meant a lot to me, and I'm really proud to be on, and you may.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I'm Leslie Bouse, Mobility Coordinator, Community Action, and I just wanted to say one thank you to Beth. Earlier this year, I was able to put together Citizen Transportation Advisory Committee, and it's just been a group of local people, some who use the program, some who are from other areas of the county who would like to have transportation. The one thing they all share is they're, they're committed to improving transportation, not only for themselves, but for everybody. So, I asked Beth to, to calm her nerves and come join me here, and I'm glad she did. And I just wanted to read one more letter from somebody who uses the program, because I think their words mean a lot more than anything I could say to you guys. So, this is from Mary Lucille Gomer, she's at 648 Belmont Avenue here in Worcester. Dear council members, I am a member of the Citizen Transportation Advisory Committee of Community Action Wayne Medina. Our committee is working on a plan to provide transportation needs for residents of Wayne County similar to what residents of the city of Worcester receive. I'm involved in this because I want others to receive transfer help, transportation help as I have. I've been able to do only limited walking with a walker for 21 years and manage in my home with a wheelchair. My advancing age has made going by car more difficult. Community Action Wayne Medina changed my ability to get to appointments and et cetera starting in the spring of 2017, when wheelchair transportation at an affordable cost became available. I no longer dread leaving my home. The drivers are always helpful and pleasant. Thank you for supporting Community Action Wayne Medina and serving the citizens of Worcester. Thank you for any support for our efforts to serve our neighbors in Wayne County. Sincerely, Mary Lucille Gomer. So, I think that speaks for itself. I've had the honor and privilege of serving the people of this community and representing them for transportation, often when they do not feel they can do that themselves, or are a little too nervous to, to speak to all you, you important folks. So, I just want to say thank you for the support that you've, you've given us. Thank you for letting us help these people live up to their potential and, and live better lives and be contributing members of our community, and just being proud to be residents of Worcester. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. If anyone has questions for those who spoke from city council, otherwise I've got a couple of points to add, but if you have any questions for the speakers, no?
I have a question. Go ahead, Leslie.
You have a question?
Well, there, there's one thing I wanted to add. Eric didn't touch on this, but through the, the year I've talked to people from different, you know, sectors of Worcester, talking about where they would like to see stops, where they would like to see additional stops. And in some of the places that we've talked about adding stops, just the hospital, both of the Bueller's, looking at when the women's residential facility, a beacon house, and the Village Network Therapeutic Center and Recovery House, when those are all open, we're looking at how we can reach out and serve those places as well, also Councilman Center, and then also reaching out to, you know, the Melrose area and getting up to, like, up in the Skylark and Hall and the Old Card Street area, just so we can help those people get, get here. So, now it's done.
No, you're fine. You're fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
I just, if you don't mind, I wanted to ask real quickly, I think this is a fantastic program, and I'm glad that the city supports it. I was just curious when, I, I was under the impression that there were going to be benches and perhaps, like, even covered bus stops put in around the city in certain areas. I was wondering if that is still something that's, you know, on the agenda to happen soon, or?
Yes, and we've been very fortunate. Currently, we have benches in five.
Okay.
Five stops, and that's something that we've essentially got in the car and drove around and said, okay, this would be good, and the city worked with the property owners in, you know, some of the places we had to kind of hold hands to, to convince them that it was going to be a good thing. But the city's been fabulous about getting concrete paths poured, getting benches installed, trash receptacles and signage, and next year, we hope to get a few more spots, and also to look into other grants and funding that we could use to maybe help build some sort of shelter. I think with this kind of project, this, it makes a good thing to find other grants that can offset those costs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? One of the things, go ahead.
Oh, I, I just wanted to thank you. I have heard no negative comments other than they want more, and I think it's, it's a nice vital link for a lot of folks, so thank you.
I have seen some of those improvements at those stops, and very well done. Looks nice.
And one other thing, I wanted to note, we, when we, when the program was kind of at rock bottom, and, and Leslie and Ashley came and said, what, what can we do about this? We're, we're not really utilizing the funds that were being authorized. I think we were authorizing $150,000. We felt good about trying to help those that had that need, and we were only getting reimbursements about $30,000. So, the program was really functionally not working until the two of you and your, your partners got started and put it back together, and I want to thank you for the Herculean efforts. One of the things we talked about way back then that I thought was a great idea, and I don't think it got taken advantage of for a while, was the, the, kind of the grant that we, that the taxi cab providers could ask for. It was up to $900 for specific causes, to, to improve their safety of their vehicles, their, their private, or, excuse me, they can do background checks or provide lettering and things to make sure that they're identifiable as, as public taxis and, you know, transportation providers. And I believe we had four participants this year, so that's great. Hope to have many more. So, that's always, always helpful to help them kind of do infrastructure on their own, for their own equipment. So, thank you. Any further questions, comments? Yes, Bill?
No, just a question. It says estimated total funds is $300,000. Is that about what it was last year, or is it?
It's just a little bit, I think last year it was in the two, in the 250, 275 range, just as a slight increase.
Okay.
Yeah, last year, last year was 293.
Oh, okay. That's not much.
Not a lot of the increase. Less than the WAADC is looking for.
Yeah. Great. Thank you, guys. It's a great, I think it's a great program.
Yes, thank you.
Unless anyone on council has an objection, I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules, but I'd be more than happy to leave it on first if people.
Just make the motion.
I would second that.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Myers is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kevin. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bostancik?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
The rules are suspended.
Motion to approve, please.
Motion to approve, adopt by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. Ansel. Any other comments, questions, inquiries? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bostancik?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Resolution number 2018 day 067 passes, and this is one of the great programs the city has, and partially, it's also because of the passage of the income tax frees up some money to allow things like this, to allow people to have a better quality of life. So, thank you, one and all, and good job, Ms. Beatty. Maybe you should go into public speaking. That brings us to the first reading of ordinance number 2018 days 023. It's presented by Mr. Ansel, slated for three readings. Ms. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Ordinance number 2018 oh two three, an ordinance appropriating from various funds to individual accounts for the current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Worcester for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2019, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours, and I'm sure everyone had plenty of time to read through this notebook.
Having just received your 2019 budget prepared by the city of Worcester's accounting group under the leadership of Andre Dordia, we have a lot of homework to do over the next two weeks, so enjoy your Thanksgiving and then get to your bookwork here, because we will have a full working session on December 3rd, starting at 6:00 PM in council chambers, which will also include presentation by Scott Boyes, CFO of the Worcester Community Hospital. So, we look forward to a productive session, and everyone, study hard, and we'll see you on the 3rd. Yes, Mr. Myers?
Mr. Brenneman, you mentioned the board meeting at the Worcester Hospital on the 28th, and you were going to forward their budget when that was completed. One of the things that Mr. Boyes has referenced in the past was a wage comparison of similar-sized hospitals, when they look at the different wages and raises and things. He's referenced it in the past, but if you could include that with the package so we could look at those comparisons, that would be great.
Yes, I'll pass that information on to Mr. Boyes and the hospital team.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, we'll consider ordinance number 2018 day 023 as having its first reading. Resolution number 2018 day 068. This is the only, I think, item that's budgeted, is will be presented by Mr. Ansel and won't require suspension of the rules. But it does require Mr. Apollo to read the title, if she would be so kind.
Resolution number 2018 oh six eight, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a purchase contract with Baypoint Technology of Richfield, Ohio, for specialized technology related to the city's servers and data storage, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This wasn't anticipated expense for this year. It's increasing our storage capacity for our servers. It's very straightforward. We are running low on storage, so anticipating that. It is a budgeted item. They didn't know when exactly, but the time has arrived, and Baypoint has provided a very competitive quote. And I'm going to let Mr. Eschelman talk about the technical component of this, but if we expense this, or if we purchase this by year end, we will save roughly $12,000. The purchase price before year end is 57.9, and if we wait till next year to do this, it'll go to 72,120 percent increase. So the timing's right. It is a budgeted item, and with that, I'll open the floor to Mr. Eschelman to talk about the technical side of this requirement. Thank you, Bob.
As with everything nowadays technology, everything's getting bigger, faster, stronger, and moving on, and that all requires more space. So applications are getting larger, needing more space. Some of the programs we currently are using require more data. Just as an example, some of our security cameras, we've increased some of those. Those commit higher resolution. Higher resolution defines, means more data, it's going to take the space. So our space is growing out. We originally got these, we left room for expansion, but we're getting low on that. We've changed some of our policies for how long we keep some of the data to extend the life of it a little bit, but it's getting shorter. So we do need to expand. The nice thing about these units and what we did when we first got them was they are units that are modular that you can add on to them, which is one of the reasons why we want to stay with the same technology that we're currently adding, because we can add additional units, which has come at a much lower cost. So it's kind of the reasons why we're getting it, and it's kind of the reason why we went with the particular type that we went, was for that expandability.
Based on our current assumption, what would you project the duration of this requested expansion or capacity?
We're hoping, and again, unless some new technology comes out that requires a lot more space, but we're hoping this to be sufficient space for four to five years.
That's fair. Thank you for that clarification.
And one of the reasons for the major discount, and Joel knows this, I tend to do a lot of my purchasing towards the end of the year. A lot of vendors want to get stock off their shelf for tax purposes, so they're willing to discount quite a bit to get it off their shelves, as long as it's off their shelf by December 31st.
Thank you. That answers the question of why the higher quote was September 26th and the lower quote November 6th.
Exactly.
That makes sense now. I was just, that's what I was about to ask. Thank you.
A lot of them do that, and it's very common. That's one of the reasons why I'd like to shop at the end of the year is to try to get those major discounts.
Can you get it gift wrapped?
What's that?
Will it come gift wrapped?
I probably could talk a minute. I'm sorry.
It's that time of year.
It's come with a kickback. I was like, no.
No, no, no. Christmas bows and ribbons.
Don't mention that word.
Yeah, relax. Just bows and ribbons.
What?
Mr. Garrus, that was bows and ribbons, not a kickback.
Well, thank you for your explanation summary. Yes, Jen?
I have a question, Mr. Ansel, and this might actually tread into the realm of a completely different subject, but in reading the resolution, I noted that it's indicated that the majority of the storage space is going to be used for cameras that will be installed downtown, and that's news to me. I'm just curious if anyone else on council knew about that? Maybe it happened before I was elected last year, or where that information came from?
I'm not aware on camera placements on the city strategic plan.
I mean, it says so in the resolution, and so.
Mm-hmm.
Hopefully, that's something we'll get.
Well, as he highlighted, cameras consume more, but.
I happened to run into one of our city staff when they were putting up a camera by a dumpster, because I know we've had a number of people come into town and try to get rid of mattresses or other large items in city dumpsters that are meant for downtown merchants. And like I said, they were inconspicuously hiding them on poles and places like that to try to catch perpetrators who are using these services as if they're free and open to the public, and they're not. So that's the only downtown camera program that I'm aware of, but I think it's been effective in protecting what we make available to the downtown merchant community, so.
If it states that that's going to be the majority of the use, I would say that's inaccurate.
It says that it needs to expand to accommodate the amount of storage needed for several cameras that will be installed. That, I believe it says, I'm looking for it now, of course.
I guess under the justification and benefit on Mr. Eschelman's summary right there.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not doubting that it's listed as being one of the things. To say it's the majority of the space going to be used, I would say that, if that came across that way, that's not accurate.
Well, the way I interpreted it, if we put the additional cameras in our system with our existing capacity, we'll be at maximum level, so.
We were talking the old.
Yeah, so the new capacity is to not only support any additional cameras, but ongoing needs.
And I'm sure that's been investigated. I just know in discussions with the police department, when talking about body cameras, that they take up a massive amount of storage space, and so I assume this is something that's been investigated, but it was just news to me, so it jumped out that it was something I wanted to ask about.
Just as a reference point, how long do you store the data on those cameras? 30 days before you?
Currently, we're down to two weeks.
Okay.
Because of storage. We used to try to do 30 days, but we're currently down to two weeks. And a couple times, I know there's been times the parks department wanted to get something because of vandalism at the park or something like that, and by the time they noticed it, it was past the time that we had retention, so.
I just, I like that for reference for council. There is a time limit. It's not indefinite.
Forever, right.
Well, the question that's begged, how many cameras are there going to be?
That's a good question.
No one asked that. Mr. Eschelman, do you know?
Well, I mean, currently, we have several cameras, you know, that are on the outside of City Hall. I know they're planning to put some at some of the parks departments. I believe there is.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Right, no, I'm.
And no one seemed fit at the administration table to keep you from twisting in the wind.
Well, you asked him, not the administration, Mr. Byten dyke. Happy to weigh in.
We didn't get the agenda till 3:30 on Friday, so it's difficult for us to do our research prior to the meeting, Mr. Mayor.
We have been having discussions because of some of the problems we've been having in our north and south Buckeye lots of installing cameras to monitor those situations, so that if anything is happening of an unlawful nature, that we will then be able to react appropriately and have evidence to back up the action. So those are discussions that are going on. We have not done that yet, but it is definitely something we are considering.
I believe it says, though, that they've been ordered. I mean, that's what the request for agenda items are, so that's what I was, I assume that we were just left out of the discussion.
They may be in that process of being ordered, absolutely. They are not up to my information or knowledge at this point in time. Mr. Eschelman might know better on the role of the cameras at this point in any of the city lots.
It says that they're on order.
There's not been any new ones installed. However, we just completed a purchase agreement for some for the PD, some for rec, and some for the areas we talked about. That was just earlier this week.
As a follow-up question, so I'm aware that the College of Worcester has their own cameras, and some of them cover the public right of way, by way of the sidewalk, but they have to post, and I believe it's according to law, they have to post that the area is under surveillance. And I know the city of Worcester has put those cameras on the dumpsters that I've seen, and they not only have a sign or a placard that indicates our ordinance, our city ordinance, but it also says that the area is under surveillance. So my question is, A, are we going to put signage out there, and B, how many total cameras do we anticipate being in the downtown area?
If it's a requirement to have cameras up, that be posted, yes, we will then post it. As I say, this has not been anything that we are to that trip point. Things have been moving forward because of some of the issues that we've had in our downtown. So this is us trying to react as spontaneously as we can as an administration to make sure that we are addressing the concerns of downtown. So our police department back there would have to advise, and our law department would have to advise as far as any type of regulations that go with cameras.
I do want to commend you, Mr. Mayor. It wasn't long ago, I believe it was last Wednesday, when I saw a whole group of people in this room, and I did not see very many smiles on Sandra's face that day, but I've seen many this evening. So I want to commend the mayor for the quick response. I thought it was great to see some of the coverage in the newspaper with what our police force is doing, and to see them out in full force, and like I said, to see the great, and to hear of the great event. I didn't, I was not able to attend, but on Friday evening, I received feedback from constituents overwhelmingly that so many people were so pleased about the Window Wonderland and that whole event that goes down in our downtown, and I think it just speaks to how much of a treasure that is in our community. So thanks for your efforts in preserving what we have.
I still didn't hear how many were ordered.
So I don't know total, because you were talking about our cameras. We were already part of our parks and other things that we have on city buildings and that. For downtown, we've talked about a couple, basically on the known areas, you know, that are out in the open, so things like chairs and tables don't get stolen. There was never an intent to hide those particular ones. I can tell you, in talking to Bob, as we were going through budgets and storage, we weren't talking about cameras specifically, we were just talking about storage in general. We just, that happens to be a piece of it, is the existing cameras. We got one on City Hall that we actually caught somebody when they drove into the building. We wouldn't have known that to catch them a couple of years ago, so.
I guess I don't understand, because it says we have cameras for the downtown area on order, so I don't, I don't, that's why I'm wondering. I mean, it doesn't mention City Hall, doesn't mention the parks, and mentions we have cameras for the downtown area on order.
I'm aware of two. We talked about a couple of spots to try to get that downtown, right on the square there, and in the alley, is what we've talked about. So did someone from IT order them?
Yes.
So there are two on order?
Yes, well, it's a, it covers the cameras. Again, if you buy in bulk, you get better pricing, so we have one, a request to the police department to add an additional one there. We have a request to the rec department, we're putting some in for there. So it's a list, so it's, that is just, you know, downtown is just a couple of those that we were purchasing.
Two different issues. The one before us is increasing our storage capacity for future use requirements. The second is a capital purchase of cameras that must be below the threshold capital amount to come to council for, so that would be a good topic of inquiry while we try to get approval on our network expansion or our storage expansion required for ongoing business for the next three to five years. So let's remain on task here, and we can follow up and get more definition as it relates to the specific location and number of cameras. And cameras are very inexpensive, by the way. They've really come down, they're, again, below the capital threshold level, so it's part of our future. There's going to be cameras everywhere. We have them throughout our facilities, and they generate a very positive return in terms of theft, in terms of accidents and damage, in terms of follow-up and documentation. It's the way of the future.
You on camera now?
Thank you. So thank you for the discussion. Much appreciated, and there'll be follow-up, I'm sure, investigations on behalf of the city, but I would like to move this along so we can enjoy. Thank you, Mr. Eschelman.
So you're going to make a motion to adopt Mr. Ansel?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Dostansik?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sevastri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Resolution number 2018 day 068 passes. Resolution number 2018 day 069. Before I go further, and I'm not taking people to task, it's just something to remember, maybe in the future, when we know we're going to have a large group of people to support a piece of legislation, is maybe move it more towards the front of the agenda rather than the latter part. And I appreciate the people there, here's patience to get to this piece of legislation. And I know it's kind of a fluid thing, and I get it, just something to kind of remember. This will be, again, presented by Mr. Ansel, but if you would, Mr. Apollo, please read the title.
Resolution number 2018 oh six nine, a resolution authorizing agreements with various applicants for the use of economic development monies.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, I hope you all had an opportunity to review the very thorough compilation of economic impact derived from our sole application for our bed tax funds. Again, this is an ongoing partnership between the Worcester Chamber of Commerce, Main Street Worcester, and the Wayne County Convention Bureau. You make our job very productive, efficient, by working together in a collaborative type of effort to not only justify the return on our investment, but secure the funds and allocations according to a at least eight-year allocation process that's proven very productive. And just for those who aren't aware, out of the first $50,000, Main Street Worcester receives 57.5 percent. The Worcester Area Chamber of Commerce, 37.5 percent. Wayne County Convention and Visitors Bureau, 5 percent of funds over $50,000, and I'll talk about the grand total, of which you've been given a 12-year summary of increases of over $50,000 funding. Main Street receives 50 percent. Worcester Area Chamber of Commerce receives 30 percent, and the Wayne County Convention Bureau and Visitors Bureau receives 20 percent. What that meant, what that's projected to be this year, we're on track to generate about $280,761 of bed taxes, which is up about a percent to prior year. Next year and the following year are going to be significantly higher because of the new hotels that have come online, but still, it's very positive growth. The general fund is earmarked to receive about $146,000. The Economic Development Fund will receive about $134,756. And what that means for our joint and sole exclusive application, Main Street will receive about $71,000. The Chamber will receive about $44,000. The Chamber will receive about $44,000, and the Wayne County Convention and Visitors Bureau will receive about 14.5, or 19.5. And you have those numbers in front of you, the specific numbers, but it has been very effective. It is the epitome of collaboration and working together in unity and harmony and generating the positive results. Not going into all the stats, because it's particularly overwhelming in terms of the justification for their requests, but I would like Justin and Sandra and Marty to talk, just maybe give yourself a plug for the camera so you can know how our bed tax dollars are being allocated to the, again, sole and exclusive requester of bed tax funds. So again, when we hear public criticism, no one else asks for it. So it makes our job pretty easy and your effectiveness. I think usually when the competition is very, very tough, and you're really, really good at what you do, no one really tries to kind of impede upon your positive momentum, and you certainly have very positive momentum. So who would like to start? Since the highest recipient of funds, why don't we just do it in progressive order? Ms. Sandra Hall, please.
Thank you very much. Every year, it's a good year. We have had, this year, we had 10 new businesses, and we have eight that have either expanded, relocated, or new ownership. And that is absolutely key to what is going on within the downtown. Next year, we have more things coming on, certainly the CSB bank on East Liberty. We, as you all know, we have made that an issue for the, the board has made it an issue for Main Street to expand and redevelop that area of town, and with the help of the city and some of the private owners in that area, that is also beginning to go. And you'll see CSB opening their bank, hopefully next summer, they hope to do that. So it's very exciting for all of us. It's the 30th, 31st year of continuous Main Street program and process. And again, it's with great pride, and you all should feel that we are the longest continuous Main Street in the state of Ohio, and we are one of about five in the country.
How impressive.
So it says a great deal to the public and private reinvestment that has happened in this downtown, and for all the good things that happen, for the people that have reinvested, the people who sponsor the events, for everyone in the community and visitors, and all the other things that go on. Is there anything specific you would like to report? I'd be glad to give it to you.
I think we're all aware of the contributions of Main Street and the downtown's success. Just keep the positive momentum, and the good things happen in downtown, Sandra. Thank you, and your team, and your team. Very much appreciated. Mr. Starland?
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight, and thank you for the past report of the continued support of the chamber. One thing that I just want to highlight is that I know that this is my sixth year as the director of the chamber, and our participation in programs, events, our promotion of the community through social media, our newsletter, it's the highest it's ever been. Someone would think, oh, your revenue's gross, right? No, that's not been the case. If you look at our budget, we ride a pretty tight budget. All of our past rainy day funds, just like you approved tonight, we made a big investment in our physical structure last year. So we hold things tight, the reason being is we continue to invest back into programs that are, that businesses, and kind of one that has been most active in the last fifteen months in Gojo. So our new corporate citizens are asking for services, programs, really to increase community involvement and buying from their employees into the community. We think that's really, really important. So these bed tax monies that we apply for every year are extremely, extremely important for our bottom line, because if you look at our budget, it's, we hold things pretty tight, and that's because we're driving money back into our programs, back into erosion of Worcester, which we would expect that, you would expect us to be doing. So thank you for the opportunity, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Keep up the good work, chamber, we appreciate your efforts. Marty?
Okay, come on, I have to share with you. As in the past, we talked in our packet about, you know, the economic impact tourism, and what we do is buying giveaways and advertising in the different programs we have. In your packet is our brand-new brochure, thanks to our partner, Worcester Color Point. We got it out a little bit early this year, and we'll be out distributing those around the county.
It's very nicely done.
Thank you, thanks. We're also partners with the Worcester Oilers in their program. We like to support them and try to drive people to do other things in town when they come in for the hockey. We're partners with the Chamber in their new map, which should be coming out very soon. But because there was a little gap there, we were kind of mapless at the time of the Wayne County Fair, so we printed these little ripoff maps, which are in pads of like 100, and have proved to be very popular with the hotels, because they can show their guests exactly where something is. You know, I want to go to the north end, I want to go downtown to this restaurant, and they can circle where it is and give them easy directions. We were very excited about this new publication, it's been around a while, but for some reason we didn't know about it, it's called Compass. We have an ad in there, and then they did this really great downtown article about Worcester in the area. It's kind of an advertorial thing, where if you buy an ad, they also come out and do a story. Table Magazine is out of Pittsburgh. It's an upscale magazine, you can tell by just the paper, it's really a nice publication. And we did a joint ad here with Medina County, advertising some of our attractions, restaurants. And then this past year, we did a motorcycle brochure, it's Medina Wayne Homes in Tuscarus County. There's routes for all counties, there's a kind of a more touristy route for shorter rides, that kind of drive people to restaurants and attractions, and there's a longer, more scenic ride for, you know, just for serious riders. And then, so that led us to do an advertisement in this local Ohio motorcycle magazine, which again, not only doesn't have an ad that tries to drive people to get the brochure, but a nice article about Amish country and riding motorcycles around the area. So I just wanted to let you know, you know, some of the things we do, a lot of times, because we want, we're advertising outside to get people in, people don't, local people don't see our ads, and so I just wanted to share that.
Marty, and again, your presentation was very thorough. Can you give us a reference? I mean, we heard from the WEDC in terms of how we rank in micropolitans across the nation, and we're, you know, in the top five, top five out of 550. When you look at the 88 counties and other, you know, corresponding visitor and convention bureaus, how do we relate in tourism for, I know, like Sandusky, it's a small town like Worcester, they're number one, but how do we rank against other counties within the state?
I don't know if there's a ranking as far as visitor spending, or, I mean, obviously, larger counties, larger budgets, Cleveland obviously is going to do a lot more than us. I can, I can find.
Yeah, but they would be in a different category when you would look at our rural communities.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have, micropolitans in tourism, or we don't divide up.
Because you know what your numbers are in terms of our county's impact. And I just thought comparatively speaking, you look at Madison County or Licking County, you know, other counties our size, and see how they rank in tourism, because I don't sense the same level of tourism in those other more rural, smaller population counties.
And a lot of those don't need that study.
Okay.
So there's, there's not that information.
Okay, I just thought I would ask. But we have a lot of activity, so that's very positive.
We do, and a lot of counties that are even larger than us, we have more economic impact from tourism.
Now Marty, that cover wasn't nearly as exciting as the cover of the magazine you gave me.
What you what? What?
The motorcycle?
Oh, that one, yeah, we're not going to talk about that. I didn't bring that.
Well, I didn't know if we could even show it. I didn't even know we could even show it on camera without some black tape across the gal's eyes.
Don't let him lead you astray. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
Again, we should be very happy and excited that we continue to grow our bed tax funds. That's a strong indicator of positive economic tourism and growth as it relates to a destination point. Wayne County is definitely a destination point, and Worcester, you know, is the capital of Wayne County, so very positive. When you look back at 2007, our total receipts were 149,000, and we're earmarked now to exceed 280,000, so 100 percent growth in that timeline or time period is pretty phenomenal, and that is going to continue to expand, so it's important for us to continue to maintain those investments in our future prosperity. So I'm going to go ahead, and even though, since this is the only application, a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final reading, then we'll open the floor for comments, Mr. Myers.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel is our second. Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll?
Bastancik?
No.
Kevin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Rules are suspended, you have a motion?
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel is our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Okay, we'll open the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ansel. I just wanted to note that, not in our packet and not necessarily available for the public to have seen, is Mr. Ansel has the binder, the very detailed application that justifies literally what the monies that the city is giving each of those organizations, what it's used for. It's a very good accounting for why it's, how it's appreciated, and how they put that to use. I think that kind of a detailed accountability is, is very helpful in continuing to promote our community, and I, hats off to you putting that information together for the application. I just note that we don't get a similar justification or use of funds from the WEDC, so it would be nice to have some idea of what those funds, which is the next piece of business, but I want to thank those that provided it for this, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Mr. Bastancik?
Yes, the only real problem I have with this right now, I know there was only one application, but I think there was a pretty compelling case made by the Ohio Light Opera, representative of the Light Opera, and the Wayne County Center for the Arts for bed tax money. I think there's really not much argument that the arts are essential to vibrant downtown in almost any city, it should be supported. And I was kind of under the impression, I know they were urged earlier on to, to apply for the bed tax money, but for some reason, they were hesitant to do so, and I'm not quite sure why. I don't know if it would be appropriate now to revisit this, or to see if there's some way we can include them, because I think they have as much right to be in here as Main Street, Main Street, I'm not saying, Chamber and Main Street and the Visitors Bureau don't do an excellent job, but I think there's enough, bed tax money is becoming some serious money, and it really is. And I think there's enough to go around for everyone. And I would just like, my opinion is that they should somehow be included in this. I know it's up to us, we did do an application, they did not apply, but we can still rectify that if we want, as a bottom.
Is that, could we propose the funding of that out of the general fund portion of the bed tax, and have that come to our next meeting?
Well, yes, and again, we have to keep business relevant and focused. The issue on hand is a process that's a well-established process, and we invested a lot of time and resources meeting with the other potential applicant. I know the administration spent time, President Biden Dyke and I spent time, and they were not compelled to apply for funding. So we moved on to the resolution before us to vote on the current methodology. The second issue is future arts investment, cultural investment from bed tax funds, it might be a part of the general funds component, if we want to do that outside the confines of the application process. And we will, I commit to you, the finance committee will meet with the administration and look at earmarking some funding that our bed tax general fund holdovers, because again, we've got funds available, and it's going to be a more important issue in future years if we hit the 17 and 20 percent projected growth with the new, you know, hotels and motels coming, hotels coming online. So two separate issues, and don't want to confuse the two, but give you our commitment as a committee that it will be a top priority, because there is a real genuine respect for the impact of fine arts and performing arts on our cultural, you know, well-being as a community. So we'll get there, but they're two separate issues at this point in time. The good news is, we have increasing bed tax funding available, so that's a positive thing. When you've got the funds and the monies, it's easier to make those type of investment decisions. So respect and appreciate your questioning, Mr. Bastancik, but I think we have a pretty much consensus approval on council that the arts are an important component of our cultural well-being as a community, and will let us work with the administration to come up with a future resolution to support that without impacting our current partners in terms of economic development within Worcester.
Are you saying this would be like a, out of the general fund then, rather than the bed tax money at some point?
No.
Or is that just up for discussion later?
No, we have the lump, as I explained, of bed tax funds available, and we give 48 percent to the application process, and we retain 52 percent in city. But that's on allocated funds. We have some discretion in how we want to invest those funds. We have programs that are not profitable, that we, the pools is an example. I mean, that's a, you know, kind of a, a community service that we provide at a negative operating cost, and that comes out of the general fund. So we have some discretion as it relates of the general fund holdover from the bed tax. So how we utilize those funds, guess what? That's our job. We can make those requests, and how we want to recommend that the administration use those funds, if they support it and we support it, then it's a kind of a directional change on how we use those funds. Instead of just incorporating those in our general fund carryover of the 3 million-plus dollars that the mayor had talked about earlier in the meeting. So we have funds available that we can kind of allocate on a discretionary basis if we have council approval. But it is bed tax funds that's rolling over to the general fund.
Well, we could go beyond bed tax funds, but at.
We could.
Right.
We absolutely could.
And that might be an item, not to rain on your parade, because it was your idea that, hey, we could have a carve-out feature that so much money is in the budget that we're going to allocate towards the arts.
No, we talked about, that was your idea, yeah, collectively.
Where the funds come from, you know, could be bed tax or part of the general fund.
Correct.
You said the administration was amenable to that.
Yes. I believe that's correct, that discussion, you're amenable to that discussion?
You are correct, Mr. Ansel, and I agree completely with your synopsis of bed tax applications. This is something that we've done ever since we started the bed tax allocation. They have, we send out, about September 15th, a notice in the paper that the applications are available, and they need to be in by October 15th, and the one application you have is the only one that did come in within that timeframe. So it is absolutely right that you consider this for the bed tax funding as submitted in front of you. I agree, there is a place in our community for arts and culture, it is an important quality of life piece, and we will make it work whether it's from bed tax funds or from general fund documents. dollars. Those are all technically in the same pot. So, what we need to decide is what is the, the level of support that our community wants to commit to, and whether that commitment is something that you start at a lower figure and, and see how that works and how it gets divided amongst the players, and, and then build over time as you start seeing how things are actually play out over the years. So, so those are discussions for us to have as, as an administration, and, and finance committees in an appropriate place to, to start those discussions.
And that's why it was very important during our committee meeting, of which you attended, that the economic driver for the OLO, and I'll just reference, was $5 million annually, based on statistical spending for those people attending the Ohio Light Opera. That's a pretty significant impact on the Worcester business community in our downtown. So, again, those are compelling arguments, but separate issue that we'll have to address, and it will be a future topic for discussion. Thank you for your feedback.
Any further discussion? I'm going to have one last word on it. How can we not fund the people that brings us the Worcester Fest wiener dog race? You can't not fund that. I'm just telling. So, seeing no further discussion, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bostancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 Day 069 passes. Brings us to Resolution 2018 Day 070. It will be presented by Mr. Ansel and slated for three readings. If you would, Mr. Paolo, would you read the title?
Resolution number 2018 oh seven oh. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Wayne Economic Development Council for Economic Development Services.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes. I want to thank Tom Fucus for his presentation on the WEDC, their impact and future vision and strategic plan. This is something that has been a great investment long-term for the city of Worcester, as the mayor highlighted. It cost us significantly less partnering through subsidy or contributions in terms of their four-year campaign than it would if we tried to staff internally. The resources available, the directional impact provided by the WEDC is second to none, so has their track record of performance been. So, this is not a payment for services rendered. It's an investment in the future, and we'll have to monitor this, as the mayor noted. If you look at the increased, proposed increase, if you look at 2% or 3% a year, it would have amounted to the same for the next four years, and it is a four-year fixed rate with no escalators. So, based on their future performance and contributions, that's something in four years from now, we'll be looking at perhaps an other upward adjustment. I will defer to Mr. Myers' request if he'd like to see some more. There's a lot of information regarding the WEDC's positive impact in terms of capital investment and income tax receipts derived. If you would like to see some more statistical data, we can defer this until the second reading. The WEDC team, I'm sure, can put some, put some compelling information together. I mean, I know in Worcester, we see that on the enterprise own requests in terms of the, the capital investment made by all of the industries in Worcester, the employment levels of all the major industries in Worcester, as well as the income tax. I'm sure our CFO over there can highlight what the tax revenue, income tax revenue for all the major employers are within the city of Worcester. So, that's numbers that I think would be nice for the citizens to see, and if you would like, I, I will hold this on first reading this evening, Mr. Myers.
Thank you. I think it would be helpful for people to see where that investment's going. It's over $200,000, and I think just kind of justification is just how it's being used to, to benefit the city. Obviously, they've got a great record of the things they've accomplished and, and economic development they've done in the past. I have no, no question about what they're doing at all, but it would just be nice to be able to justify the dollars with that kind of information.
Good. Tom, you can work with Andre and come up, and Jonathan, you guys can come up with some economic impact justification and baselines. It'll be nice to have. So, anticipate no issues here. We recognize your role and the value of your contributions. We want to maintain this ongoing positive relationship, but again, two weeks is not going to make or break the decision-making process. Thank you.
Okay. We'll have considered Resolution number 2018 Day 070 is having its first reading. This brings us to the penultimate piece of legislation, Ordinance number 2018 Day 024. It'll be presented by Mr. Myers. It's slated for three readings. Would you please read it, Mr. Paolo?
Ordinance number 2018 oh two four. An ordinance amending Chapter 521, Health, Safety and Sanitation of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Myers, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, President Biden Dyke. This just kind of arrived with the agenda late on Friday and have not had a great deal of time to get any community input. By the face of it, it looks like a really good idea. I think everyone would be more comfortable in a smoke-free environment in our city buildings and the community center, and I have a great deal of respect for Mr. Batic, who manages that facility, and if he feels this is something we need to do, I, I would tend to agree. I do think I'll leave it on first reading this evening to give the community perhaps a chance to get, reach out to their council members if they have any questions or input. I also noted that our city attorney has reviewed this, and I appreciate the time you put in there, John, to, to let us know that this is consistent with Ohio Revice Code and things. I know that's a lot of extra work, and I appreciate you doing that and providing that background. I'm going to leave this on first reading. If there's any further discussion today, that's fine. If you have any questions while Mr. Batic is here.
Okay, we'll consider Ordinance number 2018 Day, oh. I'd just like to ask if, the way I understand this, this, this is saying that vaping will not be allowed indoors of any city-owned buildings. I'm wondering if the, if using a vape pen or vaporizer, or whatever it's called, if that would be then held to the same standard as cigarettes, where you're told, I believe, you have to stand a certain distance from an entrance of a building, if, if that would also, if, I guess if that would be part of the law, John, maybe you can clarify?
Not under this ordinance, because that's, that's state law, and we're not holding it in the same
Could you please move, turn your mic?
Go ahead.
Could you turn the microphone on?
It's on.
Okay.
It's on, sorry. Yeah, not, not under this ordinance. It's, we did not include that as part of the legislation. Basically, this is just to prevent it from happening within city buildings themselves. We could add something like that in the future, or even amend this to include that, if that's something that people think, think is important. However, that's not included in this currently.
Okay, thank you.
John, I just have a question along those lines. It's not, doesn't have the same impact that cigarette smoke has. It's not prohibited at the same level.
Well, we don't know that yet. So, that's part of, I mean, I'm not a scientist. All I can tell you is what I've read.
I see people vaping in Walmart.
Yeah. So, that's
I mean, at the bars. I mean, you can't smoke at a bar, but they vape.
100%. So, right now, it's not prohibited by the state of Ohio like smoking is.
Okay.
Okay. So, across the board, in the state of Ohio, you're not allowed to smoke in public buildings unless it's a club or something like that, or privately-held a club or home, something like that. You're not allowed to smoke in buildings. That has not been extended to vaping yet. There's probably a lot of reasons for that. There's not a lot of studies as to the effects of vaping, and some people think that it could pose a danger. Other people think that it doesn't. So, we really don't know.
Okay.
And that's kind of where we're at right now.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you. If there's no further comment, we'll leave this on, consider this having had its first reading, and we will bring it back up in two weeks.
Okay. Ordinance number 2018 Day 024 has had its first reading. Final piece of legislation, Ordinance number 2018 Day 025, will be presented by, I have Mr. Sanders. Is that wrong? I might have cut and paste wrong.
Correct.
Yeah, I got Mr. Sanders.
He's been quiet for a while.
Well, just funny, it's health and safety. I was just wondering, as opposed to you.
Yeah, I didn't, I just, like I said, we got the agenda late Friday. I just noticed that
Well, anyway.
It's a law, it's a law of ordinance, so, so.
It is, it is, I've got Mr. Sanders. It's slated for three readings. Would you please read the title one last time, for good sake?
Ordinance number 2018 oh two five. An ordinance amending Chapter 521, Health, Safety and Sanitation of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Well, Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. In, in receiving this on Friday, I was rather surprised by what I'm reading, and virtually what we're looking at doing here is, actually, what we're looking at doing here is I'm going to defer this to the administration to explain this.
I'm happy to explain it for you. This was, this was probably the reason that, that you got your agendas late, because we were working on this. It's something that we've been working on for quite some time to address issues that have been brought up about some people that do not have access to shelter, or people that are not choosing to use shelter in the downtown areas and the effect that they cause, and whether or not we can address that, how we can address that in a way that is both compassionate and constitutional, and also addresses the concerns of the merchants and the citizens. That's a lot to balance, and there's a lot of things to consider, and that's why this took a while to develop. And given the, the concerns that were addressed last week, we, we actually pushed extra hard to move it up a little bit, so that people would understand that we are addressing the issue, and we're attempting to do it in a way that is both legal, compassionate, and effective. The way that we basically do this is that you, this law would prohibit people from sleeping on the streets essentially, or lodging in the streets as it's defined, if we can prove, and so this would have to be investigated by police officers, that there is available space for them in a shelter. And when I mean by them, I mean them individually. So, if they were to say, well, John Scavelli wants to sleep on the street, and they say, well, there's five beds open, you know, at a particular shelter, but I'm not allowed to go there because I've been banned from there, well, then this wouldn't apply to me. So, you could only go ahead and charge me with a violation of this section if you can prove that John Scavelli, myself, I am able to get into that shelter tonight. The reason it's structured like this is particularly because there is federal law, and the most major case comes out of the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, which is a federal court on the West Coast. And also, there is a recent decision out of Cincinnati of the Southern District of Ohio that sort of follows along the same lines. Now, I stress in the memo that this is not currently controlling law to us. We're in the Northern District of Ohio. We're in the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals. Neither one of those courts have said definitively that this is something that we have to do, although that looks to be where the law is going. Also, the Justice Department has issued a similar opinion saying that this is how they feel this situation should be handled. Basically, what it comes down to is this. If you have, if you don't have adequate shelter space for people to go into, you cannot charge somebody for being homeless. The, like I said, several courts have found that the reason for this is because that, they, they term a violation of cruel and unusual punishment. So, it's unconstitutional, because to say that there is a, it's criminal, okay, to sleep when everybody has to sleep and you have no other option where to sleep, if you do that, that is cruel and unusual punishment. So, that is what this is going to address. So, we're saying, if, if you do have somewhere to go, you can't be out there. If you don't, then we're, we're not going to charge you with anything. We're going to continue to help you look for places, and we're going to try to solve those issues as best we can. That's what this is going after. So, this would basically be a partnership really between the police, the city, and social services to try really more to solve the problem, rather than punish people or arrest them. And so, that's kind of where this is coming from. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question.
Yes.
What if you have a relative in Worcester that has an available bed?
I do not believe that that would be justification under the constitutional law that we're talking about to, to allow that person to be charged under this section. And I think that that would probably be judged as unconstitutional if that was the justification that we used.
I have a question.
Sure.
What if the person is mentally imbalanced?
Well, I mean, a lot of times, that's what we're talking about. And I don't know about particular people that are actually, you know, living outside in Worcester at this moment, but a lot of times, that's part of the problem. If that's the case, then we can still try and get them into a shelter, as long as they're able to get into one. So, what we basically do is, we're not really going to take that into consideration. It's just going to be, hey, you know, what's, what's your name? Call up the shelter. Are we able to get them in here tonight? If we can't get them in, then we may charge them. If they're mentally imbalanced, then most likely, we're not going to be able to charge them anyway, because a lot of times, even if you do charge somebody with that, if they're incompetent, stand trial, they're not going to move forward on a criminal case regardless.
So, they would be, they would need to be deemed incompetent?
Well, correct. Yeah. And the other part of it, too, is that what this is really aiming to do is to make contact with these people and help work with them to find shelter. The, the criminal penalty part of it helps move that along and helps give them a little bit of incentive, and based upon current constitutional precedent, we believe that that will be found to be constitutional. However, really, the goal is to help these people.
Right.
Mr. Scavelli, I'm not, there's not a question pertaining to this particular ordinance, but related, one of the thoughts that came up was a curfew in some of the public areas in downtown. If we were to designate them arcs, we could then have a curfew after businesses were closed. Has that been considered?
It has been considered. It's a possibility. I don't know if, the difficulties I see with it, and it doesn't mean it's not something we can consider, and like I said, it has been thought of. The difficulties I see with it are that, first of all, it's going to prohibit everybody from going to them, right? So, prohibit, it wouldn't just prohibit some people, it would prohibit everyone. But beyond that, too, is that what you're going to do is you'll end up just pushing them somewhere else, rather than having, you know, individuals in a park, you may, which they're not allowed to be in parks anywhere. Rather than it being one place, you're going to push them out on the street, or someplace that's actually more dangerous for them. So, we don't know if that's really the way to go. Like I said, trying to work with them and social services to get them shelter is really the, what we believe is the, the most appropriate way.
Okay, thank you.
I believe that, and, and I could be wrong, but I think there's a couple, there's two shelters, to my knowledge, in the city of Worcester. That would be the Salvation Army and 180, and it's my understanding that they both have maximum time allowances where people are allowed to stay, whether it be two weeks, or 30 days, or, or whatever. And I'm sure this is something you've taken into consideration, but after that, that time, are these individuals then going to be held to the same law, to the, the citation limit, or misdemeanor, if they're, if they've stayed in the shelter and then they're back out on the street and they can't get back in?
No.
Okay.
So, the thing is, if they can't get back in, then they don't get cited.
Okay. And so, on the same note, on the same token, if they are breaking the rules, and, for example, I know that Salvation Army will not allow you to stay there if you are violent, or if you're a sexual offender. So, those individuals then would also be allowed to not, they wouldn't be charged with a misdemeanor for being on the street?
If they can't get in, they don't get cited.
Okay.
That's basically the easiest way to explain it.
I happened to end up with two copies of the ordinance, and at first, I, I read in your first paragraph of your memo, when I was reviewing the information, that you were considering a second piece of legislation.
Yes.
You didn't provide a draft of that to council this morning?
We did not. We're still working on that, so that is, that's a right-of-way piece of legislation. And when, kind of passing it around to law enforcement and through the prosecutor, there's some things we want to work on as far as enforcement of that goes. So, you may be seeing that in the future, you may not be, but it's still being being worked on, so...
So there is no timeline for when we may, or may not see that?
I don't know yet. Um, like I said, we, this one, this one got, uh, pushed a little bit, um, so we're still working on it, I don't know when that'll be ready.
Thank you very much for your efforts.
Oh, my pleasure.
So, the portions two, three, and four, it says right-of-way tree lawn and sidewalk, so at this point then, you're saying that with what we have in front of us, those will not, those, if someone is lodging in the right-of-way tree lawn or sidewalk, that they will not be able to be cited?
No, so they, they can be cited if we can prove, um, also, that they have somewhere to go. So that's really the point. So, like I said, what we're trying to, attempting to try to do is do something that is constitutional, right? So that in a year from now, we don't have to repeal it and have somebody say that what we're doing was, um, unconstitutional. And, and really, honestly, it's also, like I said, it's the, uh, probably the, a more compassionate way to go too, just to make sure that we're trying to help them at the same time, so...
So can I ask Mr. Sueli? This, this, I'm assuming, would supersede the current law, which I believe, Julie, you explained to me that, um, an individual, basically the loophole that, um, I believe one individual has, has sort of found, is that if he moves his items once within a twenty-four hour period, he's not considered, um, to be lodging in that location. So this would supersede that?
If he, if, I believe I understand what individual you're talking about, but if he is, if he is sleeping outside, this would apply to him, as long as there is somewhere he could go.
Okay.
With that, we'll, uh, we'll leave this on first reading this evening, and we'll, uh, revisit this in two weeks.
Okay. Ordinance number twenty eighteen day zero two five has had its first reading. Brings us to miscellaneous, we'll start with you, Mr. Sanders.
Nothing to add, Mr. President.
Mr. Silvestri?
Nothing to add, Mr. President, thank you.
Ms. Warden?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Ansel?
Nothing, Mr. President.
Mr. Bostansik?
Nothing at all.
Mr. Kevin?
Move to adjourn.
So we got Mr. Myers, and then I'll enter, take...
I have nothing further. Mr. Kevin?
Move to adjourn.
Adjourned by Mr. Kevin, and second?
No, re, uh, the, the finance committee meeting.
Oh, six o'clock.
I like that, one more time.
All right, finance committee meeting on December third at six P.M. Be there. All right. Second by Mr. Ansel, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.